Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And good afternoon to the folks who are online. I know you're out there and you're watching. I'm Rebecca Dorge. I'm the provost at RPI. Thank you again for welcoming me over this last year. I think now I'm in and I'm not new anymore. It's my pleasure to introduce the 19th president of Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, Dr. Marty Schmidt, class of 1981. Prior to his arrival at RPI just over two years ago, Marty served as provost at MIT. He earned his undergraduate degree in electrical engineering from RPI, 1981, and his master's and PhD from MIT, both in electrical engineering and computer science. So please join me in welcoming my boss and President Schmidt to the stage.
Thank you.
I promise I'll be funny one day.
So welcome, everyone. It's great to see you. And for those of you online, the thousands that are online, thank you for coming. I will admit right away that I am very tired. It's been a busy month and I wrote this, I read these remarks on a car ride up from New York City this morning after we had a, actually a really great bicentennial event in the city with, you know, a couple hundred people and a lot of energy. So it's uplifting, but then, you know, you get a little exhausted. But I'm excited to be here. I wanted to talk a little bit about sort of some of the things that we've learned through the course of the bicentennial. If, in full disclosure, if you went to the state of the institute address, which I gave at the reunion weekend, or if you were brave and got up early and sat with the parents in this room last weekend, some of the things I'm going to share, you've already heard, and I apologize for that. But look, it's been a long month. So, you know, when I think about the bicentennial, and I want to call out and specifically thank all of the folks, because it really took an army that pulled off all the great events we had specifically, you know, as we rolled our way up to bicentennial weekend. But certainly, one of them was the carnival with an actual Ferris wheel. And of course, we know George Ferris, class of 1881. We had, our estimates are, over the two days that Ferris wheel was being operated on Friday, where we were largely focused on the campus community, Saturday inviting Troy. And what I heard was the folks in the Troy market, the Troy Farmers Market, were encouraging people to go up the hill and experience the carnival, which they did, which was great. So our estimate, as I'm told, is that we had 12,000 people over those two days experiencing that. So I think it was a great thing to do. And I think with the students' encouragement and help, I think we should consider the fall carnival as being an annual event, just like GM week going forward, because there's just a lot of excitement. I'm also told that on Friday, it officially ended at seven, and the field was packed with students just enjoying themselves. So that kind of joy, we need to have more of at RPI. And I think the conclusion is that it'll be called Ferris Wheeler's Day Off next week. Now, the interesting thing about the Ferris wheel, of course, is we're learning a lot about it. And our own Chris Letchford gave a beautiful interview on Channel, it's, Chris, are you here? I don't know. I think it was Channel 10? Yeah, okay, Sam's indicating that it was. Beautiful interview on Channel 10, basically talking about the genius of the Ferris wheel, which is that when you look at it, first of all, it was inspired by this, which is the Burden Water, the Burden Iron Works water wheel, which powered the steelmaking industry in downtown Troy. But it's modeled after that in the sense it's designed to be a bike wheel, meaning that the spokes are in tension, it puts the ring in compression, and it allows you to build a wheel that's extraordinarily strong but also lightweight. And the one that was on exhibit in the World's Fair in 1893 in Chicago actually would hold 2,000 people at a time as it was being operated. So it had to be strong. But it was a great time to reflect on Ferris, George Ferris's contribution. And then I think, you know, as we rolled into the reunion weekend, if you were at the drone show, I think you all would agree, it was epic. Just, I mean, there was the issue with the fireworks and the smoke coming at us, but small price to pay for an exhibit that literally took your breath away, I think. And so that was a lot of fun. And I'd like to say I took that picture because it's pretty spectacular, but really great. And reunion and homecoming weekend was a complete success. Last year, we had 707 people registered for the reunion. This year, we had 2,157. So we had three times as many participate. And that difference made all the world a difference in terms of people's energy, the joy that we were feeling. We combined it where we had all the school councils meeting just before the reunion weekend. They came up to the president's house for a reception on, was it Thursday? I'm looking at somebody, somebody's nodding, it was Thursday. You know, and so there was a lot of opportunity to interact with people who are really leaning in and helping the schools along. But I think the secret sauce of this reunion was about a year ago, various affinity groups that normally would meet, not always in Troy, frankly, but normally would meet with their fellow alumni on an annual basis. And it was often fraternity sororities or ROTC. But they started reaching out to us a year ago and saying, hey, we would like to do our reunion this year on reunion weekend. And I think we achieved a breakthrough there, which is we, Matt's organization worked really hard with everyone else, Peter and all involved, to make it possible and easy for them to come. So do you need a venue? Well, here it is. Do you need access to a caterer? Well, here's some people to contact. And just make it easy for them to come. And I think that's what resulted. And what they reported to us was they really liked the fact that they saw their fraternity or sorority members, but they also saw people they hadn't seen in a long time from their class year. And I think we have to make a concerted effort to continue that. Because when you bring more than 2,000 people to the campus and you have an opportunity to talk to them about what's happening today and inspire them by getting to see the red talks, which are spectacular, and getting to interact with our students, it builds up that alumni pride that I think is so important, so important to the future of this university. So thank you, you know, I can't thank you enough for everything everyone did to make that such a phenomenal success. So we've also been learning a lot about our history. And I have to say that my favorite story for the bicentennial year is something I learned that happened at RPI in 1948. So if you've heard this story, I apologize, but if you haven't, I think you're going to like it. So I recently had the pleasure of getting to know Bill Coleman, who's a member of the class of 1949. He turned 100 years old in August. So what's interesting about that is Bill turned 100 on our 200th birthday, which meant that he was born on our 100th birthday. I was alerted to Bill's upcoming birthday and his amazing story by his granddaughter-in-law, Megan Potter, who actually works at RPI. She had emailed me in July this summer and asked if I would send Bill, who is a class of 49 graduate, a birthday card because he was turning 100 in August. But as I learned more about Bill's story and the things that happened at RPI in the spring of '48, I realized that I really needed to go see him. Well, it turns out that in the summer, Bill lives on Swan's Island, which is off the coast of Maine. It's a beautiful island, but it's quite remote. And so Jen Brock, the manager of Presidential Office Operations and Board Relations, and I, basically had to take planes, trains, and ferries to get there. And so let me tell you the story. So we call it Jen and Marty's Big Adventure. So Jen left Troy and drove to Bar Harbor. Lynn was going to go with me on this trip until she learned that the transit from Boston, where we were, to Bar Harbor was a seven-passenger Cessna, where the seventh passenger sat in the copilot seat. So I went by myself. We rendezvoused at Bar Harbor Airport, and then we took a car down to Bass Harbor, at the lowermost tip of Bar Harbor. And then we boarded a ferry for the 40-minute ride to Swan's Island, where we were greeted by Bill's family, a lovely family, who the day before had celebrated Bill's 100th birthday. And this is the family. Bill is sitting in the middle of the picture, wearing a blue fleece jacket. The rest of his family surrounds him. On the upper-left corner is Megan Potter. If you see her, and I think she's in ITWS, you can say hi to her. Next to her is her husband, Chris, and Chris is holding Bill's great-grandson. So Bill was a real trooper, considering he must have partied like a rock star on his 100th birthday, but he was up to the task. We, of course, brought birthday gifts, basically RPI swag for him. And we enjoyed and recorded about 90 minutes of video, having Bill recount his life history. And we'll be, you know, generating that into a movie in a little while. And this is a picture of Bill that we took of him when he was a Boy Scout growing up. So Bill grew up in Connecticut. He came to RPI, and at the end of his freshman year, he enlisted in the US Army's Air Force. So the Air Force was not yet a separate branch of the military. And he was trained to fly P-47 fighters in World War II. At the end of World War II, he returned to RPI. So this would have been in the fall of 1945. And he helped the institute launch its varsity lacrosse team. So prior to that, RPI did not have a varsity lacrosse program. Bill was one of the pioneering students to form it. And what I learned when I talked to Bill on Swan's Island was that when they formed that team, only four players on that team had ever played lacrosse before. Only four. But they had the wisdom to hire a coach, a young coach that nobody knew of, named Ned Harkness. Now Ned, of course, was the famous coach which led both lacrosse and hockey programs at RPI and took RPI's hockey program to the national championship in 1954. By their third year, in the spring of 1948, RPI's lacrosse team was actually the top college lacrosse team in the country. Top college lacrosse team in the country after three years of formation, and they were undefeated. So this happened to be very fortuitous, because the Olympics, which were to be held in London in the summer of '48, had decided to make lacrosse an exhibition sport. And because RPI was the top program in the United States, they were asked to represent the US in a demonstration game against the British All-Stars. Now, this story, if you liked the book or the movie, Boys in the Boat, you'll see consistent themes between this story of this lacrosse program and that team that rode in the Olympics. One example is, in order for them to represent the United States in London, they had to raise $20,000. That would pay for their passage across and all the other associated costs. And to put that in perspective, $20,000 in 1948 is roughly about $260,000 today. And so you ask, how in the world would they raise that kind of money, especially after World War II? And what happens is that the hockey, the lacrosse program was so beloved, so beloved not only by the students but by the residents of Troy, that when they played their home games on 86 Field, 4,000 fans showed up for every home game that season. And so they raised that $20,000 from their fellow students and from residents of Detroit, $10 at a time, and raised enough money to go across. But in addition to having to raise $20,000, they had to get 875 pounds of non-perishable food. Why? Well, they needed to eat as they crossed the Atlantic for nine days, and food was scarce in post-war England. And so they had to bring enough provisions to feed themselves for the time they were there. But they did that. And so they took a train, I believe, from Troy to New York City, where they met up with all the rest of the US athletes. They transited the Atlantic and what was repositioned troop carriers from the war, and then had that fateful game. And so we can give you a semblance of what that looked like. So this, this is the championship '48 team. Their jerseys that year were cherry-colored jerseys with the white shoulders with the RPI block letters. I can never remember which one is Bill, and I'll have to ask Megan again, but Ned Harkness is on the far left in the white hat and the white jacket, a young Ned Harkness, no doubt. This is a picture which we took, a picture of a picture that we took when we were on Swan's Island, and the person in the middle is Bill. And he's talking to his coach Ned Harkness, standing next to one of his fellow teammates. And you'll note that they're wearing the outfits, the uniforms they had designed for the Olympics, which say, "RPI USA." And those are the uniforms that they wore. This is them boarding the ship in New York City on their way to London. And this is them stowing their belongings in this troop carrier, which I'm told those bunks were stacked six high on the ship. And then this is the actual game. So they played a number of exhibition games all over England. The final game, or the second to last game, was the game in Wembley Stadium. They played in front of 60,000 fans, 60,000 fans. The RPI team got off to an early lead. I think it was like 4 to 1. But then something happened, something happened in the stadium, and I'm going to let Bill tell you the story. But the Olympic demonstration game was, as I understand it, played in Wembley Stadium.
That's right.
And was reported that 60,000 people were in attendance for that game.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't doubt it.
Yeah. And as I understand it, RPI went out to an early lead against the British team. And then, and then you had shared with me that in the middle of the game, everything went quiet.
Yeah.
Do you remember, can you share with us why?
Yeah. All of a sudden, we looked around, and there's the king and queen up in the box, right up there in front of us. And Elizabeth.
Wow.
The princess.
And did they play "Hail to the King" or?
Yeah, they did. They did.
So you got to perform in front of the king and queen of England?
Yeah.
Now, the game ended in a tie, as I understand it.
Right.
Okay. So you were?
Barely.
So you're going to have to watch the rest of the movie to find out why he said barely, but it was a pretty exciting ending. And it was just a, you know, it's one of those things that you'll always remember, having had the opportunity to meet someone like Bill, 100 years old. I think, I think his grandson said to me, Marty, he's got a mind and a memory of a 30-year-old, he just happens to be in a 100-year-old body. So just amazing. Bill, the year after he graduated, he went on to marry his Brussels sage sweetheart. They were married for 71 years until she sadly passed three years ago. 10 years after graduation, he grew a business that he formed in New Hampshire based on a machine he designed to take glass fiber and weave it into fiberglass sheets. Now, that was 1959. That's great timing, because that's when all those New England boat builders were converting from wooded hills to fiberglass holes. So he grew the business spectacularly and sold it when he retired. So just an amazing story. And, you know, we've been learning all year about amazing alumni, not the least of which is, what we've learned is that over the last eight years, over the last year alone, eight alumni and a trustee were elected to the National Academy of Engineering. Six of our graduate students received National Science Foundation Research Fellowships. And biomedical engineer Dr. Sheldon Weinbaum, of the class of 1959, received the National Science Medal at a ceremony held at the White House with President Obama, or President Biden. So a lot of great things to talk about. But let me shift gears now and talk to you a little bit about the university today, particularly about the finances. In fiscal year '24, which is the year we finished at the end of June, we balanced our operating budget, but we had a lower-than-anticipated tuition revenue because of smaller-than-planned first-year class size, and because we had seen our discounting on tuition increase somewhat. And so those reductions in revenue were offset by reduced expenses and by spending some prior-year operating reserves. At the same time, we made investments in RPI by adding new faculty and staff to support the growth of research and by adding more staff in institute advancement. Our debt was reduced by $25 million and now sits at approximately $605 million. And at the end of fiscal year 2024, our endowment once again stood at $1 billion, which was a result of an 11.9% return this last fiscal year. Our endowment had actually topped $1 billion in fiscal year 2021, thanks to an astounding 59% return that year. But in fiscal year '22, as interest rates rose, stocks fell, and our exposure to public equities meant that our endowment actually declined 18%. And unfortunately, an asset class that had been designed to hedge our portfolio instead turned out to be correlated with public equity. So that led to that sharp decline in the down market. So last year, with the leadership of our trustee, Jack Ty, who has a very distinguished career in finance, he led an effort where we, working closely with Eileen's team, to find a new investment advisor, which we did. Company is called Rock Creek. They're based in Washington, DC. And the thing we really liked about Rock Creek was we were very impressed with their quantitative, data-driven investment approach. And they have multiple PhDs that work in the organization. And I think that is not, that that strong return which we saw this past year is not coincidental. Certainly, Rock Creek did a lot of changes to the portfolio, as much as they could in the year, and I think it stood us well. And I think it stands us well for as we move forward in thinking about endowment performance. It was also interesting that these quantitative staff members at Rock Creek were also so interested in this that they came up for the ribbon-cutting of the quantum computer. And when they were up, they asked if they could hire some of our students to explore the use of quantum computing in finance. So we introduced them to our co-presidents of the RPI Quantum Computing Club, Nick Grablevsky and Queenie Sun, to help them with portfolio analysis. So Nick and Queenie spent about a month, spent a little bit of time in Washington, some time up here, developing algorithms that would run on our new quantum computer. And the results were spectacular. First of all, they did enough that they're writing a paper on what they learned and what they did with Rock Creek. But also, it turns out that IBM maintains an open-source library. So if you write algorithms to run on the Quantum System One, you could put them in the open-source repository. And they're segmented by fields. So there's a repository for finance algorithms. And in those four weeks, Queenie and Nick submitted enough algorithms to that library that they increased it by 40%. Two students just completed their junior year in computer science, could do that in four weeks. So I think, when you think about that, and the other thing I will say about it is that when we announced that we'd get the quantum computer, there were 40 students in the Quantum Computing Club. They had self-assembled before they knew we were going to get a quantum computer. They were just incredibly curious about quantum computing. But when I last saw Nick and Queenie, I said, well, how big is the Quantum Computing Club today? And the answer was 400. So they went from 40 to 400 in a little over a year. And interestingly enough, half of those are freshmen. And most of them elected to come to RPI because of the opportunity to interact with the quantum computer. So it was pretty interesting. And we're working really hard to use the quantum computer, write proposals to basically grow our sponsored research activity. So this is just Rock Creek's logo, and this is an example of the five algorithms that Queenie and Nick wrote and added to that library there. We also, we're continuing to work really hard to pursue more research opportunities enabled by the Chips and Science Act. We recently signed a partnership agreement with Hokkaido University. That's important because Japan has really gotten behind the reshoring of semiconductors. And the way they're doing that is by forming a company called Rapidus that happens to be in Hokkaido Prefecture. We've developed relationships with Rapidus, and we're hoping that through the combination of the relationships with Rapidus and with Hokkaido University, we'll be able to develop even more research and workforce development funding. I want to shift gears a little bit and talk about rankings. And the reason why I want to do that is, this year, the college rankings are out. And whereas last year, we went up in one and down in another, this year, we went down in both The Wall Street Journal and the US News &amp; World Reports. We're in the midst of analyzing these rankings to try and understand what happened. The ranking, these two organizations do change their methodology for ranking frequently. And so every time you see a movement, you're trying to unpack what exactly did they do. And we need to address this or study this, because many people look at the rankings, and that informs their decisions of where they want to go. But I also think, and I say this somewhat facetiously, I think we should develop our own ranking. And what I mean by that is, we should think about, what is it that we think makes RPI special? What is it that we're proud of about RPI? What is it that we would tell someone in encouraging them to come to RPI? And if we can define those things, then why not see how we do relative to our peers? Because the data's available, the tools to analyze the data are available, and so you can do this. And this is starting to happen. So if you look at, for example, the college scorecard, this is something the government does, and it measures how well graduates do 10 years after arriving, after beginning their matriculation. And this is an example of all US four-year schools, their earnings 10 years out in RPI, where we're basically, our earnings of our students are twice those of students graduating from the median of all other four-year schools. Another interesting ranking is done by a faculty group at Harvard called Opportunity Insights. It's economists. And what they did was, they scoured the patent database as a metric of inventors and said, how many, how prolific are graduates of various universities in becoming inventors, as demonstrated by getting issued US patents, international as well? And in that regard, we have the third-most inventive alumni behind MIT and Carnegie Mellon and ahead of Stanford, Case, Michigan, Clarkson, et cetera. So these are just, I think, interesting facts, and the ability to think about, how do we take more of this information and put together our story? Not US News &amp; World Report's story, not The Wall Street Journal's story, but our story, the story we want to tell about the educational experience at RPI. Now, I'm really thrilled with the ranking I want to share with you right now, which is, it's very exciting to me that we are the second-happiest campus in the United States. Second-happiest campus in the United States. Now, you could say, come on, how do you figure that out? Well, it's actually quite quantitative. What you do is you go to Instagram, you pull down selfies, selfies that are geotagged to our campus or 87 other campuses in the US. Then you take those selfies and you push it through an Amazon emotion AI program, which measures, what's the emotion of the face in this selfie? Are they sad? Are they scared? Are they depressed? Are they happy? And by that metric of analyzing the selfies that were taken on our campus, we are the second-happiest campus in the United States. It's provable. Now, I will admit, I will admit that I was quite dubious of this ranking. So I started thinking of, well, what's my counterexample? What's a, what's a, what's a campus I can think of where there's no way that people on that campus are happy? Well, it turns out there's one that's really an interesting case. So there's one campus that oftentimes proudly proclaims that they are the place where fun goes to die. Seriously, does anybody know what that campus is?
Harvard.
No? University of Chicago. You can look it up. If you Google, "Where does fun go to die?", University of Chicago. Matt can tell you that, because he worked there. He got out before he died. So what he did was, I went to look at the rankings of the 88 schools. I looked at the bottom 10, and there's University of Chicago. So clearly, these rankings must be correct. And I just, I just have to guess that at Rice University, not only does it go to die, but they bury it there. Anyway, you know, a little bit of levity, but I think, you know, just an example of where I think we need to tell our story. And the last one I was going to give you, coming back to something serious, is that there's also, and I forget whether it was Joel Plasky or Chris Letchford, or no, maybe it was Zaki, I think, clued me in to, there is a ranking where people look at, how successful are undergraduate programs in placing their graduates into top PhD programs in the country? Turns out, we do really well there. If you are a graduate, if you're a bachelor's degree recipient from RPI in physics, we are ranked 10th in the nation in putting you in the top graduate physics programs in the country, which puts us actually ahead of Cornell, Stanford, Yale, and Harvard. If you are a graduate in engineering, we rank sixth in the nation in putting you into a top graduate program, which puts us ahead of Purdue, Carnegie Mellon, Georgia Tech, Princeton, Cornell, and Stanford. And this is a quantitative ranking based on where you did your undergraduate, what are considered to be the top PhD programs, and they're normalized by the number of graduate students or undergraduates you produce. So all, just to say, I think we have a great story to tell, we just have to unpack it and tell it. So now let me talk a little bit in a more serious way. Let me talk about, a little bit about fiscal year 2025, which is the year we're currently in. The budget for FY '24 gets set in the spring of FY '25, gets set in the spring of '24. So back around March or April is when we finalize the budget for the year we're currently in. And that's based on our anticipated enrollment targets that we don't fully know until students arrive in September. And unfortunately, we did not meet our enrollment goals for the class that started this year, which required us to adjust the budget for the year we were in. The important punchline is that we do not need to make any cuts, but we do need to temper our growth plans. And let me explain. Our targeted class for this year was 1,650 students, but we enrolled 1,319. We made some immediate adjustments to partially reduce the financial impact of this, like taking the Colony Dorm offline. And you should know that we're not alone in this. A lot of the private institutions experienced a challenge in filling their classes. And some of this had to do with the FAFSA debacle associated with students getting clarity on their financial aid potential from the federal government. And that actually led to a flight from private schools to some of the larger public schools. So for example, Purdue today has experienced record increase in their enrollment numbers this year. this year, to the point where there's challenge to find dorm rooms for them. But a second factor was our work to try and control the amount of discounting we do in tuition, which the discount is, of course, the difference between our published tuition and what percentage of students actually pay on average. And we tried to hold that discount rate firm this year, which is bucking the nationwide trend. And what you would notice, or what you would learn if you studied what happened at the College of St. Rose, they struggled to fill their classes and continued to discount the tuition to bring more people in. And that's frankly, a death spiral. And in fact, even Union College, which in many ways has better ratios of endowment to debt than RPI, received a negative outlook from credit agency Moody's because they have seen a decline or, you know, an increase in their discount rate, which generally speaking, people are very wary of. So that was a path we didn't want to take on. But it does reinforce the importance of our need to increase our scholarship resources through philanthropy, and this will certainly be an important focus for us all as we go forward. So not reaching our enrollment targets has consequences. The loss of resources in tuition, housing, and dining has an impact on our multi-year plan to regrow the faculty and staff, in large part because we will live with those lost resources for the four years that this class ripples through the university. And so we need to, and we will work very hard this year to ensure we get back to our enrollment target, but in the meantime, we need to temper our growth plans. So to put things in context, we've added 50 faculty since I arrived on campus, bringing us to 327. We set a goal back then in that first year of getting back to 350. So we're well more than half of our way on the way there, when our faculty count was at about 280. So we made a lot of progress. We also added 163 staff, bringing us up to 1,200, which is more than halfway towards the other goal we set for staff. And we've done this, I need to say, with the robust support of the RPI Board of Trustees. But we need our revenue growth associated with these investments, like adding faculty to grow research, like adding staff in alumni relations as an advancement to increase philanthropy. We need to see that revenue growth catch up with our faculty and staff growth. We see encouraging signs, there's been a significant growth in the number of research proposals that went out the door this year, and there's been growth in the engagement of our alumni with increasing signals that they are giving back and that the giving is going to grow. But for the time being, rather than spending resources on population growth, we need to use those resources to support the folks that are here. So we can maintain competitive compensation and invest in areas that help people be more effective in their jobs. As a result, we will slow our planned hiring of faculty this year. Positions that are fully funded, like constellation chairs, we'll continue to search for. And where we are experiencing retirements or departures, we'll work to refill those positions as well. But we will expect the department heads and the deans to work with the provost and determine how best to prioritize the filling of those open slots and how to make sure we have the needed resources for startups and space renovation. And we're going to take a similar approach to staff hiring. So no cuts, but measured refilling of the slots as we take this pause in growing. Once we stabilize our enrollments and we see those increased proposals in the past year turn into successful awards in the coming year, and the solicitations to alumni this past year turning into gifts in the coming year, we'll return to our growth plans. In the meantime, we'll concentrate internally on making the most of the investments we've made thus far, again, with the full support of the Board of Trustees. And speaking of enrollment, we're looking hard at how we can improve our enrollment outcomes. While we'll be in a leadership transition with John Wexler's announced departure, I appreciate that Hannah Rodriguez Farrar, I appreciate her willingness to step in and use her significant familiarity with enrollment from working in the president's office at both Brown and Colgate to help us improve. And we're looking at the entire funnel, from interests expressed in RPI to matriculation on the campus, to determine what we can do to strengthen the outcomes and more effectively market RPI to the right demographic. Right now, I would say that our yield rate, or the percentage of students we admit who choose to enroll, is low. And as a result, we admit many students and wind up challenged to predict the actual size of the class. And we saw that in 2022, when we had our largest freshman class, and we saw it again this year when we had one of our lowest freshman classes. And so, working harder to market to the students that we know want to come to RPI and bringing them here, I think, puts us in a position of being able to drive our yield up and get a more predictable and stable class size. And lastly, I just want to say, in pivoting to the next topic, that I mentioned John's departure, but I also want to take this moment to also recognize Ernie Katzwinkel. We announced on Tuesday that Ernie will be retiring, and I just want to say that I'm deeply grateful for all the work that Ernie has done for RBI, and in particular, how supportive he's been for me for my first two years. So Ernie, I see you up front, and I want to... Okay, let me now talk about macro environment of higher ed and how we need to think about this with respect to our future. And I'll try and make this quick. Higher ed overall is facing some strong headwinds. Nationwide, there's a loss of conviction that a four-year degree is the path to prosperity. There are serious concerns about the cost of higher education. Protests and disruptions on college campuses as a result of the conflict in the Middle East have not endeared higher ed to many members of the public. And we still face a demographic cliff to come, with the number of high school graduates nationwide peaking next year, and then expected to decline by as much as 15% in the following five, 10 years. Now, I believe, to some extent, STEM institutions like RPI are less impacted by these types of concerns, particularly concerns about return on investment. But nonetheless, we're not immune from these national trends. And every signal suggests that relying too much on undergraduate tuition for operating revenue is risky. And so, we want to keep our undergraduate program robust and the best in the country, but we also have to look at ways to build greater financial resiliency. One way to do that, which will be part of our fundraising challenges or opportunities, is to increase our scholarship contributions, that we can then make the cost of the undergraduate education more affordable and more attractive for students to come to RPI. But growing sponsored research, which means also adding graduate students, I think will be an important thing to do, and we're committed to do that, and working hard with the faculty that are arrived and the faculty that are here to help the more successful in pursuing research grants. And I think we can do that, and I think we do that, and also create great opportunities for undergraduates to participate in sponsored research if they so choose. The second lever is continuing to grow our ability to deliver RPI-quality education to people who aren't resident on this campus, whether or not that's students or people pursuing to continuing education, working professionals who want to learn about emerging technologies. We had, in our past, a significant history and accomplishments in the space, but it has become a very competitive space as it's moved offline. So this is an area where it's likely that we'll be growing slowly, but I think it's an important area for us to be in, and I think with our STEM focus in an area where we can create competitive advantages. And as one example of that, this month, we launched an eight-week course for working professionals to understand quantum computing, clearly something that, based upon our emerging expertise in quantum computing, we have the credibility of saying, we can offer a great course in that. The third lever, and the most important lever, is philanthropy. And this fundamentally depends on re-engaging our alumni, building relationships with our alumni, getting them excited about what's happening in RPI, and getting them to want to be part of this, getting them to want to be part of it, and help move the institution forward. If there's one thing that'll happen in my time as president, it will be us changing our trajectory in terms of our relationship with our alumni. This is, I believe, the most thing, most important thing for the next century of this institution, is having a deeply committed alumni that are proud of the institution and are helping us succeed. It's exciting. I mean, it was a fantastic time in New York City last night. People were excited, and I told them the same thing I said at the State of the Institute reunion to 2,100 people. We need to deputize, they are the believers, they take the time to come to our events. We need to deputize them, we need to give them with these pride points, we need to let them know we're the second happiest campus in the United States, so they can tell their friends. And that's what it's a lot about, and you build those relationships and the dollars follow. So we'll formally launch our strategic plan at the same moment as we relaunch the campaign. So in December, we'll have a gala where we'll say, the billion-dollar campaign that RPI started in 2017 is now a $1.5 billion campaign with a new set of goals defined by our strategic plan. We have $750 million for the current campaign, and good practice says you announce your new campaign when you have half of the money in the bank, and that's where we're at. So that's what we'll be doing. We'll couple it to the launch of the strategic plan. I want to thank everybody. This has been, this has taken longer than I thought it would to develop this plan. We'll have it ready to go, certainly by the end of the year, but hopefully sooner. But I'm very happy and pleased with the level of involvement between the five working groups, the Idea Bank, and I know that May Lee, in particular, has gone out and talked over 100 stakeholder groups, we've talked to alumni, the Faculty Senate, deans, department chairs, cabinet members, student leaders, heads of research centers, alumni, the RAA. We've taken it to the board twice, and I think it's really beginning to take shape, and I'm excited to share it with you as soon as we've finalized it. I've talked too much, so let me try and wrap up. There's been a lot that's happened, even while we're building the strategic plan, working with Lou Padula to basically do a transformation of HR. And some of you have shared with me in the recent months how you're seeing that, how you're seeing things and the relationship that you have with the HR function improving. Rebecca and her team worked incredibly hard to bring student life into the provost's office, and I think we saw real positive signs of that integration of student life and academics, particularly in the arts summer experience. We created a new Office of Strategic Alliances and Translation with John Dordeck, and we created the, we brought together communications and community engagement through OCEC. So a lot of work to do, or a lot of work that's been done, but a lot of work to do. And I would say that, I would say that the opportunity set in front of us is massive, but I also would say that our challenge is being able to move fast, because some of the opportunities that are in front of us are fleeting opportunities. And our ability to move with speed and agility is going to determine whether or not we are able to take care of those opportunities. So if I had to say anything about the coming year, it's going to be a year where we're going to be laser-focused on those opportunities and focused on understanding, how do we move quicker? So if we're working on growing sponsored research, we need to talk to the faculty, we need to talk to people writing research proposals, find out, what are the frictions? What are the things that limit your capacity to go further in pursuing sponsored research dollars? And then we need to bring together portfolios and be laser-focused on how we improve those things. So we can't boil the ocean, but if, I think if we take this targeted approach to areas that help us move the financial needle, which gets us back on the growth curve, we'll build the muscle memory to know how to fix the other things that are holding us back. And I think that would be the one thing I would impart to you. And I'll end with two things. One is my admiration for our students. I am so impressed, so impressed with our students and how they've conducted themselves since October 7th of last year. On so many campuses, the disruption has been frankly disheartening, but also frankly a little unsettling. And we've had nothing like that. And I really, truly believe it's because our students, and I think a lot of this has to do with the student governance system that's created by the Rensselaer Student Union and their ability to work together, has helped us navigate through this. Now, knock on wood, I'm not saying that things might not happen in the future, but I've been so impressed by how our students have been able to have respectful conversation and reach compromises, and it just has, I think, taken us through this year in an amazing way. So I just credit our students and those of you who support our students in getting to that. So I just want to conclude by saying, there's some dour points in this message about where we stand, but I couldn't be more convinced that this is the best decade for this institution if we can execute on these opportunities. I'm absolutely committed to this, the board is absolutely committed to it. I know we all want the same thing, but I also know it's going to be hard, and I appreciate that you carry on with good spirit and hope for what I think will be an even brighter future and an even brighter next century for RPI. So thank you, I'm sorry I took so long, but I had a lot I wanted to share. So, oh yeah, well, we've got a half an hour for questions, great. I usually try and run out the clock, but I think we have microphones and we can entertain You have to raise your hand so we know you want to ask a question. All right, Adam's got it.
And I want to thank you for that talk. I mean, it was very compelling in a number of ways, and I kind of want to, the question I have, I guess, sort of starts where you finished. And I'm curious if you might give us a little insight.
I'm okay, keep going.
I'm curious if you could give us a little insight into your process when you make decisions to speak from the Office of the President. And this is particularly with regard to the events that took place on October 7th last year, right? You were very clear about the moral compass that you were sort of pushing or embracing in that statement. But we've seen these genocide-level forms of violence inflicted in Gaza since then, but we haven't heard a similar statement coming from the Office of the President. And I think this is important in a number of ways. And I say this because I think our students are uniquely sort of connected with this and are uniquely sort of aware of this. These are questions that they bring up in class. They recognize that our school is intimately connected with the military-industrial complex. They are well aware that they're going to be working in corporations and companies that produce weapons or other kind of African other connections that facilitate these kind of military endeavors. And they have questions about how they can take part and engage in those careers and still maintain some sense of moral cohesion, right? Individuals like, I mean, Benjamin Netanyahu is an MIT graduate, right? And I think our students are very aware that they can find themselves in positions where they are complicit in these acts that are morally reprehensible. And I'm not trying to, I mean, this is, this is a very sincere question that I have for you, which is, when you are deciding to make a statement from the Office of the President, like what is, yeah, what is the calculus, what's the process that you go through when you decide to or to not make a comment on an event like that?
Well, the short answer is, and when I did my listening tour in the first months, it was a question that I asked everybody that I met with, which is, when do you think it's appropriate for the president to speak? Because when the president's speaking, he's speaking on behalf of the university, okay? And so I think it's really important to think about, are you really speaking for the university in its totality? With respect to October 7th, you know, my experience at that moment was, we had had an incident early in the week that had caused a number of students to be extremely upset. We were able to address it, but by about Tuesday of that week, I became, as we were seeing some of what had transpired, I became really concerned about an escalation that we're seeing on other campuses. So my message, as I tried to pose it, was to simply say, I can't tell you not to express your views on these matters. That's, you know, that goes against a lot of the opportunity for free expression, I think. But what I would ask, particularly in this moment, that if you are expressing your views, that you consider that the person you might be expressing those to may be as deeply impacted by this as you are, but perhaps have a different view. And so try and have that conversation in a way in which you're expressing your views, but in a way that is, it displays some degree of empathy. And that was my intention. It was not to take a position one way or the other on behalf of the institute. And that's been my approach throughout for that one. But I also think that we need to encourage, as much as possible, our students to go through that self-discovery and see where they land in that. And I think, in many ways, I'm looking at a lot of faculty who can help facilitate those conversations. And in fact, Rensselaer Voices for Palestine had an event, I think it was September, is that, yeah, where they invited several speakers in. where they invited several speakers in. I was anxious as to how that would go, but as I understand it from people that were there, I wasn't unable to attend. It was a very respectful conversation. People shared their perspectives, their lived experiences in that region, and I think people went away with information. Information that hopefully allowed them to shape their thinking, and I think that's the role of the university. So, I can only answer the question, Adam, in the context of when presented with a specific situation, and that's the one I give you. I appreciate the question, though. Others? Oh, Sasha. Good to see you. I haven't seen you in a while.
I just came over running again.
Oh, gosh. Well, you're not out of breath this time.
I practiced. I have two questions. The first one is a shorter one and pertains to your comments with regards to alumni relations and them being one of the major directions to work towards. And that was a very strong statement, and I just want to comment that, from my perspective, I felt like a lot of graduate alumni felt like they were ejected a little bit forcefully from the RPI community after graduating by removing the RPI email address. And obviously, it's always a question of money and investment, and some service cannot be maintained. But it seems to me that a lot of engagement, specifically of graduate students, could be maintained while, but still allowing access in one way or form or another to the community and to the other email addresses that they know from their time being here by having access to the email. That's my first question.
Yeah, so let me restate it, make sure I got it. I think your question is, the way we transition people off of their RPI email upon graduation, and as I understand it, happens to both undergraduates and graduate students, is fairly abrupt.
Yeah, and basically, your email address being cut, your email is being deleted, and so you don't have access to any parts of the community anymore. And if they had, like, and if everybody will still have their emails, if you want 10 years later to message the guy you met at the lab who still have your RPI email address, that would contribute to the community being much stronger and connected.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think that's something we should work on, frankly, because I also hadn't appreciated that until a year or so into my appointment. And I think coming up with an easier glide path, which I think maybe other institutions have figured out how you transition people onto an external email, but there's a pathway for people to find you. One of the things that, by the way, came up when we had the interview with RJ Scaringe, the founder of Rivian, he referenced something called infinite connections, which is something that exists at MIT where alumni voluntarily put their contact information, their email address, and maybe things like their LinkedIn profile into a database that's only accessible by alumni of RPI and RPI current students. And in RJ's case, he used that to network, to build a network that he needed to create an electric vehicle company. And we've talked about this, and I think this, you know, we're looking at, from the alumni office perspective, can we create that kind of connectivity that makes that transition from being a student to being an alumni a little more seamless with respect to the ability to communicate?
And the other question I have is, well, it's multiple but discussed in one, is with regards to AI being used as a tool. And there are several parts to this question. One is with regards to the undergrads, because I had experienced myself and several other TAs that kind of, we don't know what to do when ChatGPT is being used for homework, how to grade it, how to approach it. As a student, I always have kind of plausible deniability, but in some cases, it's very obvious the tool has been used. So, first part of the question is, how will this AI-assisted tools being used in undergraduate education, how will the policies being changed? And number two is pertaining to graduate education. And the situation there is a little bit different because the purpose, as I understand, of graduate school is an apprenticeship, right? To apply the knowledge that you've gained in undergrad and to produce new knowledge. And there are different stances. One is that if you have too much assistance, you don't learn anything. And it's, you should, and to truly understand the craft, you have to learn everything by yourself. And with writing and everything else. And this counterweights by some other opinions that I've heard from graduate students. They'd say, yes, that is true, but RPI doesn't function in vacuum. And if we do it like this, then we become less competitive with regards to our peer institutions who may be more successfully employing this tool. So, this is the second part of the question. And the third part is, how are we doing in that regard with? It's short. I promise. How are we doing in that regard with comparison to our peer institutions?
Yeah, so I don't know the answer to the third. So, now it's just a two-part. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give either the Provost or any of the academic Deans the opportunity to opine on this. My personal view, Sasha, is that I often think about, I think I was the first class at RPI that had to use calculators, all right? The class before us, before my class, used a slide rule. And what was interesting about slide rules is that you knew what the right order or magnitude of the answer was, because the way the slide rule was used, you knew that, you know, either it was going to be in the 10,000s or the 100,000s or the millions, or it'd be 10 to the minus 8 rather than 10 to the minus 10. And when people started using calculators, they just punched numbers in, and the result came out, and it must be good because it's a calculator. But maybe they punched the wrong numbers in. And so, one lost this kind of sense of order or magnitude that was implicit in using a slide rule. And, you know, the feeling at the time was, well, maybe we should stay with slide rules. Well, you could tell how that turned out. So, I think it's a technology. It's here. I think it's inevitable that we just have to embrace it and figure out how we're going to use it rather than ban it. And that, the how we're going to use it, I think, is the important question, which Presidents never have time to think about, but surely Provosts and Deans do. Do you want to go, Rebecca? Not to put you on the spot.
I think my boss just put me on the spot. We are, so, hi Sasha. Where are you? Hi. Good to see you. I know your voice without turning around, so. We are, John Kolb is sitting over here, and we are talking about a policy for the university. Is that fair, John? And quite honestly, what Marty said, it's this, we're at a moment in time where we're in a change phase, and we all have to learn how to do this. And for right now, Sasha, I think that the responsibility falls to the faculty for whom you're TA-ing to specify how they want to use the generative AI in their class, because it certainly changes across disciplines what that means. So, right now, that's what I tell faculty, is cover it in your syllabus. And I think I can maybe predict that there will be some AI institutional policy, but with enough wiggle room so that we can still allow people to teach and students to learn how to use this tool in a responsible way.
Shakar, you want to add to that, Bill?
I was just going to say that faculty can also use ChatGPT in their exams. Professor Agung Julius, Associate Dean in Engineering, is sitting here. He used ChatGPT to prove a theorem and then gave that proof to students, saying, there's a mistake in here. Find the mistake. ChatGPT is so very good at language and fooling us that the average on that exam, that problem, was 44%, and the average on the rest of the exam was 77%, right? So, I think, I guess a broader point is that we cannot police use of ChatGPT. We got to teach our students that, here's, I used ChatGPT, this was the answer, and then I improved upon it, and here's my sort of edits to ChatGPT. That may be acceptable, and I think we're learning to figure this out, really. Yep.
Thanks, Shakar. Any other questions? Well, let's see if somebody else has a question, Sasha. Any others? Yes, in the back.
I just want to start off and say, as a student, I'm very proud to be a part of the Rensselaer community and to represent RPI, especially during the bicentennial this year. I read the Morning Mail basically every single morning, and my main question for you is, you mentioned RJ Scaringe a little while ago, and he is someone that I've looked up to. I'm a big fan of electric vehicles, and I think that's like where we're heading, and that's the future of a lot of transportation modes. And I was very unfortunate to hear that he came to our school, and I missed out on an event like that. And I do read the Morning Mail every morning, but that did slip by me. So, I just was wondering if there's any way RPI could maybe broadcast events with CEOs and founders and other people of that nature a little bit better so more of the community can hear them as well.
Yeah, I think it's a basic challenge we face, which is, people get their news through different channels, and I think we're in this, you know, like, look, when my, when my sons were in college, they never read their email. Never. And you had to send them a text message saying, read your email. I just sent you something, you know? So, I think, I think we do have that challenge, and congratulations that you read the Morning Mail. I love you. I don't know if it was in the Morning Mail. I kind of think it might have been, but it might not have been, we might have buried the lead. So, that's unfortunate. I will say that I think you'll see RJ again without saying much more. Yeah, he's awesome. But, so, I apologize for that. But I also, we've had this, Rebecca and I meet with the Student Leadership Group, both at the undergraduate and graduate level, once a month. And this has been a recurring question that we've struggled with, which is, how do we bundle information in a way in which, you know, because I've heard people say to me, oh, I can't scroll to the bottom of Morning Mail, you know? So, we, and that's not a critique, it's just how people digest information. And so, I think that's a challenge, and it's not a challenge unique to us, but it'd be a great challenge if we could solve it together, you know? So, it's not a great answer for you. I apologize, but thanks for asking it nonetheless. Going once, going twice. I will tell you a funny story, Dan, about RJ. So, two stories. No, just one. He, after he spent, after he gave his talk on Saturday, he came over to the President's house so I could have coffee with him and talk about a bunch of things. But he was driving that weekend. Now, where's Jeff Miner? Is Jeff with us? Yeah, there he is. So, Jeff has the R1T, which now we know is waterproof, because if you look for a viral video, a person that owned the R1T parked it in a parking lot, Hurricane Helene comes, and the car is 150 feet away from where it had been, completely caked in mud with a bed full of water and mud. Now, the thing that's cool about the Rivian is when you walk next to it and it senses your presence as the owner, the door handles pop out. So, this gentleman said, oh, gosh, you know, this car's toast. But as he walked closer to the car, he noticed that the mud by the door bulged out, reflective of the fact that the patient was alive. So, he scraped the mud off the door handle and opened it, and the cab of the truck was bone-dry. And he got in the car and turned the car on, and it was, the battery was charged, and it ran. So, he closed the door, posed it off, and off he went. And that video has gone viral, so I think, I think, Jeff, you could probably get a good price on your used R1T if you wanted to. But when RJ was up at the house, he came up in the R1S, which is the SUV, and he's a tall guy. So, when he parked it at the President's house, it was like, you know, it was almost like the Big Wheel trucks or whatever. And Lynn and I have been having an argument. What's new? About, could this fourth Suburban that we've owned be the last Suburban we own? It was a great vehicle when you have four kids and hockey bags and your car pulling to go to eight hockey, youth hockey games a weekend. But, you know, I don't know that we need such a large car. And, you know, Lynn's very attached to this car. It feels very safe. So, when RJ was leaving, I said to him, RJ, how would you like to show Mrs. Schmidt her future car? So, we got the dealer demo from the founder of Rivian. And he also turns out to be a great salesman, because she's teetering. But when she walked up to the car, it's like, I can't get this car. I can't even get into it. There's no running boards. And RJ says, oh, wait, wait, wait. You know what he did, Jeff, right? He lowered the car. And Lynn got in, and then it went back up. And it does that. When you walk up to it, it lowers itself and everything. So, anyway, you might be seeing it read, Rivian SUV at some point in the future at the President's residence. But with that, yeah, just, let's talk it up, right? 400 mile range, you could easily get to Gloucester without charging. So, anyway, thank you. Thanks for listening to me. I hope my message was a call to action, but also a call of the sense that I have that we're at an important inflection point in this university, but we're still on a trajectory, I believe, to change the future of this institution in a really positive way. And that's why, that's what gets me up in the morning, and I love seeing you guys here. Thank you. Good luck for the rest of the day and for the rest of the semester.